Please call the roll.
Daniels here.
Ellison here.
No master?
Eric Thompson here.
Or Cam?
Here.
Thank you. We'll move into our first discussion item, V1, Summer Programming Update.
Yep. Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. I'd like to invite my leadership team up here, Steve to share information that we have going on through community services and recreation this summer. We'll start off on our first slide. Just our first slide just kind of showcases all the current publications and information we have out there. Hopefully, all of you have received our summer catalog in your homes, highlighting everything we have going on this summer. In addition to that, sent out earlier in this calendar year here, the ECFE and Early Childhood Registration forms are out, and we are still taking registrations for them as they fill up for next fall. And the current publication of The Voice for our older adult and senior population that comes out through our senior center is also available online as well. I gave everyone copies of the current catalog along with some event information coming up, so hopefully you have that in front of you. And then we'll just take a few moments to go through our programming highlights with our team. And we're going to start with Early Childhood and Jersey Recreation.
Oh, good. Thanks for having us.
From the early childhood world, summer programs will continue similar to what we did last year with a few tweaks. I'll talk through what those are. We will be doing Next Step K again for our incoming kindergarteners. It's a blend, like it was last year, between an invite model on the part of students who either attended our early childhood classes this year but are still scoring below what we would consider to be developmentally appropriate, either in social, emotional, or in academic skill. And so they're being invited by teachers to attend for free, as well as students that were identifying through screening who may never have had the opportunity to attend an early childhood program. So we're giving those children the chance to attend for free. In addition to that, we blended together with students whose families would like them to attend as a camp-style model. And we're running it in combination with Camp Summer, which Nicole will talk about in a moment. The difference this year is rather than pulling from our school readiness funding, which we did last year to be able to support the pilot of this program, we've worked together with Nicole to be able to figure out how to access some targeted services dollars to be able to cover the cost for those students that are being invited by their teacher. And that includes some then follow-up and some evaluation on the part of the teacher for the summer program, where they will be able to provide some feedback to the parents about whether or not a series of goals were met over the course of that summer program. So it gives us a little tighter of an opportunity to have some dialogue with families about any progress that we saw over the summer. So we're excited about that. There will be three sites with two sessions each. The sites will correspond again with Camp Summer. And the benefit to that for us in early childhood is that we can provide both busing and opportunities for students who would receive free and reduced lunch to be able to access our meal program during the day. Those three sites are Lake Ayers, help me out here, Otter, and North Star. And we will be able to bus them to and from camp. We're hoping for about 100 kids. We met that goal last year, which was super exciting, and we got great feedback. So I'm excited to invite and welcome a new crop of kids to come on through. As for ECFE, we will continue to do playground play groups. Those are offered three sessions each month over the summer. It's two sessions where they meet at West Park and have a big play with other families who have similar age kids. And then they do a field trip on the third week. June's field trip, I think, is to Tamarack to explore the discovery area of Tamarack. And then they do a beach play day in July, and then the end of August with the families at Normandy Park, so that we can get kids registered for ECFE classes.
Charles, do you want to do questions at the end or after program areas to your preference?
Let's do questions at the end.
Well, I'll just share information on our school time programs.
Yes, thank you for having us. We have a lot going on this summer as well. As Jersey had said, our three locations for elementary schools are Otter, Lake, Lake Ayers, and North Star. We also have our Flex program and our middle school summer U program that will be housed at Matoska. Typically, we have that at Central, but with construction and the heat and all of the air advisories. We opted for air-conditioned building this year for our middle schoolers, so they're very excited about that. We currently have 632 summer contracts for extended day. And I think that actually went up to date to 641, so we're 50 more contracts than we were last summer. And I am so excited to say that we have two positions left, and then we're fully staffed with no wait lists for the summer. So that was huge for us. We also are currently going through the Ignite After School Accreditation process. And we were part of this with our after-school association as well before. And there were two districts that went through it, so we'll continue those best practices this summer. Our Flex program has been slightly reimagined. We did move our fifth graders back to extended day partly because it was a lock for transportation in terms of kids going to Camp Summer in extended day. So we moved those fifth graders back so they could access their Camp Summer sites. And the Flex program has been reimagined to be more of a sixth through eighth grade program, along with our Youth Enrichment site that has 131 offerings. So that Matoska will also be very busy this summer with a lot of really fun and exciting things. For Camp Summer and Summer U, for Camp Summer, we're continuing the camp model this year. We did send out registrations and we're at 434 as of today. So that's about 20 to 30 shy of what we went, what we had last summer. So we set the deadline at noon today, but I'm guessing that a few more will trickle in. So that's an exciting thing that that many families were able to register so quickly. And we also were able to get $10,000 in leftover summer learning funds to fund two school psychologists that will be in program, as well as $50,000 to reduce our class sizes. So that was really exciting since we're now back to strictly targeted services dollars for the summer. And also, I'm happy to report all of our teachers and parents and staff are hired for that program too. So we're really doing well there. And then for Youth Enrichment, finally, as we've kind of talked about, most of the programs will be at Matoska. Some will also be running out of North Star, and there are 131 options for families this year, including some new kind of, the coding ones have really been taken off, so we've been offering a lot more of those options.
Just following up with the summer learning portion, I added a slide for Freedom Schools. We send invitations out to our four title schools. This year, we was a little over 700 invitations. We can accept up to 200 scholars. We're currently at about 112 as of this morning. Also set the registration deadline at around April 20th, or on April 20th, but we'll be sending that out to accept as many kids as we can. We want to make sure that we fill as many of those seats as we possibly can this summer. We'll be in Willow Lane again this year, running from July 5th through August 11th. Full days, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 3:30. Again, same style as last year. We had a really good turnout last year, hoping to expand and grow on that, especially in the areas of not only the school day, but parent and family engagement as well. Looking to schedule five parent involvement nights, one each week during the program, as well as an open house to start to give parent feedback, get them connected to resources in the community, and just to kind of build that kind of connection between school and home. So we have a national training that was not offered last year. Last year, due to COVID, it was offered remotely, digitally. This year, they are inviting first and second-year sites. As this is our second year, we'll be sending 10 staff members down for the national training in Knoxville in July, or June, sorry. We also had our fully staffed for that program as well this summer. Our leadership team has also been established as well, working with the Equity Team. And our field trips are being, I mean, things are moving along really, really well compared to last year, where the first year where you're going to do a new program, you don't know what you don't know yet. And having that first year under our belt really kicked us off to a great start this year, this time around. Been feeling really good about leading in the summer. So we'll transition from there over to recreation and sports games. Matt Revo.
Hi, everybody. Matt Revo, oversee all the youth rec sports. Thanks for having us. Appreciate it. So this summer, we're looking to serve over 1,000 families or participants. Typically, every summer, it's well over 1,000, so it's pretty exciting. It's full goal. Some of the leagues that we're offering is T-ball. We usually get about 400 kids in T-ball. And then our baseball league, which is grades two through five, and our softball league, which is grades two through 12. And with those three programs, if I can get everything kind of coordinated how I want, we should have about 90 parent volunteer coaches for all three of those. So that's a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of information to get out to them so we can get these kids the best experience possible, among with the coaches too. So yeah, that is, it's, I mean, everybody is excited to get outside throwing ball with the weather here. So some other stuff that we got going on is tennis. And then we also offer all of our summer camps, which is a wide variety of basketball, play football, track, volleyball, Nordic ski, wrestling, golf, soccer, lacrosse, and cheerleading. So with select camps here, we do work with varsity coaches. Basketball, volleyball, wrestling, and track, I believe, are the ones. So yeah, we're looking to get going. And then the photos down here, which are kind of fun, going left to right, that's our Little Cups Football Camp. I think we moved out to year 10 for that, which is pretty amazing. And then middle, middle photo is our T-ball program. It's kind of hard to see this, but. Another fun photo is the bottom right. That's one of our girls softball leagues. From last year, they won the state championship, rec state championship for, I think they were eighth graders, seventh and eighth graders. So that was pretty fun. But yeah, baseball leagues, hopefully for the kid pitch, we get about six or eight teams. The kid pitch, we should have about five teams if I remember correctly. And then girls softball, it's kind of a wide variety. We do collaborate with other communities too, because sometimes they only can get one team, and they're looking for places to play. That goes vice versa with other kind of age or grade leagues that we offer too. So yeah.
All right. And then John Anderson, the adult programs.
Yeah, thanks for having us. In addition to what Matt was talking about, I was, I work with all the youth organizations outside of what are, what we do internally. So we have Baseball Association, Basketball Association, Soccer, Ross. And so we try to take mass programs and take all the other programs that are within the White Bear School District and you can build them together, create a great spot for everybody. And tell you what, everybody's loving these new fields that we have. So again, thank you for pushing through and making those available because they are making our spaces much more attractive than they haven't happened before. So people are definitely noticing the changes there. From the adult program side of things, Elite Pickleball asks, because that's the exciting thing I know. But on the senior center side of things, we do a lot of repeat up, repeat things. So I just, you know, our summers are much, are much different. We average about 500 activity members during the month. And it's, it's a hot place Monday through Thursday, and they're ready to play cards and privilege and do everything else like that. So they're, they're, they're there. They're showing up more. All the winter virge are coming back, so it's getting busier. Some of the special events that we're looking forward to this summer, we have a parking lot sale that's going to happen in May. We do an open house craft routine. We do one in the spring. We do one in the fall. That's our, we have about 50 to 60 vendors. Signees that create crafts and things for people. They sell them off, and they do a great job. So it's giving our adults some activities that they can participate in. We just had our Senior Housing Day this past Saturday. We had about 18 different housing communities come in from the White Bear area to talk about their housing options and provide information for people who are looking to take that next step. And so that was another successful program that we just ran. We do a lot of 55-plus drivers classes. Those are busy every month. Those are filling up. Meals on Wheels is another big one that we provide out of our, our area. We have 85 clients, and we're, we have about seven or eight routes every day, Monday through Friday, that we're delivering hot meals to our clients along with frozen meals and other services we can provide with that. So that's an important piece that we do on a daily, daily for us. So coming up, this, this, some more community events that we're working on this Friday. We have our last TDIF dinner. We're going to have carbonis. And early, the 4:30 meal is topped out at 45 people. So if you'd like to come, 5:45 is open. So just let us know. We'll get you a spot for some pizza. Again, I mentioned the Senior Housing Day and the parking lot sale. We have the Bears Explore Outdoor coming up in June. I haven't talked about that already. And then we've done, we've done in the past, we've done a number of Food Truck Fridays. But those, last, last summer didn't go so well. So this year, we're focusing on, we're going to try and do a big partnership with the Lions Club. They're going to come in and cook for us. We're going to have summer barbecue on Thursday. So again, I invite you all to come and see what we do there. So some of the new opportunities, the walking track at the Field House has been a huge success. I'll forget the numbers. We have, yeah, through, through March was over 350 walkers. And we've been mainly going Monday through Thursday, Thursday nights. And this weather couldn't have worked out better for us for having people come in. But I'm kind of waiting for everybody to go outside, so hopefully we get through there. We're trying some new things in the Field House on Saturdays when there are not activities going on. We've been having some pickleball camps, pickleball, open pickleball play for our pickleball members. Those have been well received. Just the use of the Field House, we've had a couple basketball tournaments. We have volleyball tournament two weekends ago. And then this week, there's going to be a football camp, Football Association's doing. So we're trying to, trying to reach out and do many, many different things with our facilities. And so again, it's, it's been wonderful to have those resources for us to use and for our communities. So thank you.
You know, we, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without community involvement. And you know, Matt alluded to it a little bit around volunteers and how to work out with our youth athletic programs. And every volunteers we have across our programs, we value their time and their efforts to support us in everything we do. And with upcoming community events, to be out there in the community face-to-face, to offer opportunities for folks as well as engage with them. But May 6th, as part of the work that we partner with our many faces of the White Bear Lake area, that's, some of you are involved in some capacity. But that community collaborative, as I like to call it, is up to 30 members of different organizations across the district, which is a very, very important and very, very collaborative natured. I don't want to call it an organization because it's not an organization. It's just a lot of individual organizations and entities that want to do a lot of good for the community. But on May 6th, we are hosting a Wa Chee P event, a powwow, at Sunrise Park Middle School from 11 to 6, the grand march. Part of the event will be at 1 o'clock. So if you're available that day and would like to come out, I would encourage you to do so. Bring a neighbor, bring a friend. We would love to see as many of you out there as possible. I gave all the board members a postcard if anybody else would like one. I have some extras upstairs. So we really hope to see you guys there. And then June 2nd, we're hosting a Bears Explore Outdoors event. It started with a simple question of, Zeebo, one of our, our Youth Enrichment specialists said, I want to do a fishing event. And then we put together a small committee, and this thing has snowballed into what we hope to be something that we'll do for some years to come. We'll be partnering with Ramsey County, the DNR, to host an event on that Friday night over at the Bald Eagle Boat March, Ramsey County Boat March. We're working with a company called Bass Tech, whose mission is to get fishing poles into the hands of youth, especially under served with youth and by hot families. So we're working with them to provide experiences for kids on how to, how to tie a loo, or how to tie a loo or cast a line and fish. And word got out, and we've made some connections with other folks. So Ramsey County is going to be there with their water safety team. And it really, from that type of safety, Ramsey County through from a fishing event to really just once outdoors in the White Bear Lake area. Fishing, biking, hiking, walking, running, you know, the trail system, working with them to showcase all the things we have available outside of very, very low cost of payment. So the entire event is free. We received a small grant from Redeemer Church to support the event, to pay for food. We're bringing in food from Red Luna, and it's helping pay for our contract with Bass Tech. We're also partnering with the White Bear Lake Rotary to supply some volunteers and some giveaways for families that may show with students. The Minnesota Recylery donated 40 bicycles for us to give away from all ages. Right now, they're, they're stationed up in Hugo, ready to be taken out of the gym and brought down. So we're hoping to give those away. And again, just a lot of other community involvement. The Bald Eagle, I didn't know they had this, the Bald Eagle Pontoon Association. Patty Hall, who's very active in the community, reached out and wants to see what she can do to support some pontoon rides around the lake and see what they can do as many of them live on the lake and want to support it. So there is a Facebook event online. If you haven't seen it yet, please look for it and let us know if you're interested. We are not taking registrations for the event, but people clicking that interested button will give us a nice, you know, a nice way to let us know how many people might be coming, whether it's 40 or 140. But we're hoping the weather cooperates and it's hoped to be a great event. And the last one, there's what John mentioned earlier, on July 20th, the senior barbecue at the Senior Center. And then at the very bottom, you can save the date for August 1st. It'll be our, our Bears Night Out over at Pontoon Park. Lots going on in the summer. It tends to go by very quickly, sometimes too quickly. But you know, we offer a wide variety of kids, academics, enrichment, activities, athletics, for all ages over the course of the summer. So we're really excited for the summer to come and happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much. Any questions from the board? Ms. Daniels.
It's really rolling grants for the summer camp and Summer U. It's really exciting. And you have grants for two psychologists and some less size. I'm just wondering, were those through the state or how did you?
They were leftover from previous year's summer learning funds that we've applied for the past two years. But there were some leftovers, so we were able to do that again this year.
Yeah, it's so exciting. And then I just wondered about the staffing for the Freedom Schools. I think you're getting a lot of the returned staff, because I know staff last year was fabulous. I just wondered if they were coming back or you're still hiring?
Yep, we are, as of right now, fully staffed. So this year, we're bringing, I forgot to mention, so last year, we didn't have any licensed staff. We went with the model that they recommended. This year, we are doing a mix of licensed teachers, as well as what they call serving leader interns or their SLI positions. So we have six new licensed staff coming out that are current teachers or leadership in the district. And then we have 10 returning staff that worked at this last year.
Oh, Ms. Thompson.
No question, just a comment on how I'm always amazed at all the opportunities that we're able to offer for our community services program. And I'm just thankful for all the work that you all do to put this together. And there's, I mean, you name it, you can do it here in the White Bear Lake School District. And when the thing came in the mail, my daughter was like, oh, yay! And she ran off to her bedroom. I'm not sure what she's planning on doing yet, but I'm sure I'll find out soon. So thank you.
That's a, I've never heard a story of a kid grabbing a catalog.
And she's in eighth grade. I, I'm still waiting to see what she wants to sign up for. But she was excited to see it, to go in her room and look through it. And I'm sure she's planning something with her friends. We'll find out soon enough.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And hopefully, we haven't missed the deadline. I'll have to talk to her about it when I get home.
Great. This is wonderful. Thank you all so much for your work.
Thanks, everybody.
We'll move into discussion item B2, the HBCU Field Trip. Ms. Shavers. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. I just wanted to take a moment and just have these individuals, fine individuals, introduce themselves to you all.
Hi, my name is Patricia Farrell. I am parrot south and also advisor for BSU.
I'm with, and this ain't, I'm a senior ass though.
I'm Ken Dogg, I'm a senior ass though.
I'm Jay Sean Grant, I'm a senior ass though.
I'm John Tedvall, so I'm a senior ass though.
I'm Joshua Dogger, I'm a senior ass though.
Adrian Turner, Associate Activities Director.
These individuals had the opportunity of a lifetime, I really truly believe, to visit some historically black colleges at the beginning of April with the help of many, I will say, including teachers, staff, community members as well. And even with their own efforts through some fundraising that they did individually as or as a group to ensure that they had the financial means to take this trip. But I will turn this over to Ms. Patricia at this point to go through the slides with, and I'll. If you could just talk a little bit about the trip.
I'd like to say, first of all, thank you for having us and thank you for supporting us. For our students, it was a trip of a lifetime. They quickly found out what they can become before they dreamed it, but they didn't know that it was possible. And for them to see so many people that look like them do great things, it was, it was a beautiful thing. It was a beautiful trip. And they behaved. So yes, we had a great time. Our first slide, as you know, we had an April food day. The snow came, and we had to dig our way out. And some of the students panicked, and they were calling, and they were saying, don't leave us, don't leave us. I said, I can't leave you because I can't get off myself. So we dug our way out, and we got on the bus around 11ish. We went to Wisconsin, and the students were excited to, we wanted to stop and look at Lake Michigan. And so that's a picture of the, at Lake Michigan, and it was, it was a beautiful sight. This is Morgan State College. The kids were really excited about this college, and they were impressed by it, and it was very welcoming. We also went to Clark Atlanta, which was very welcoming also. Virginia State is one of their favorites. The college students actually came out and involved them in what they were doing. They were having community activities within the college, so they let the kids get involved. The children also had an opportunity to interview a professor. And he was, you know, very kind and gave them a lot of advice. Also, we went to Norfolk State. Before we got there, at our hotel, it was the lady who was serving us breakfast. And I was telling her that one of our students wanted to be in the band at this particular college. And she said, oh, no, no, no. My grandson is in that band. And she actually called the band teacher and let them know we're coming. So she got to meet the band director, and he told her that it's a possibility that she could go to this particular college and to send over her transfer. So that was exciting. This is Howard. They call it the, the Black Harvard. A lot of our students were very impressed with this particular college. And we got to talk to a lot of people, a lot of coaches, boys wanted, of course, you know, see the facility, the sports facility. This next picture here, we were also with another group from Chicago. So the kids got to make a lot of friends on the trip. And our, our kids and their kids were so very different, but they easily joined together and made it an awesome trip. Oh, this was my favorite part right here. We got to go see Martin Luther King National Historical Park. And I've always wanted to visit this church, and our kids took it very seriously. It was very spiritual for a lot of them. This is. We can show you how you can attend this college. And they gave a lot of information and they were most impressed with, Wazzer, of course, our Miss Wazzer. So I think I want her to go there. And these are our student highlights. One student was offered an official tryout, was banned. One student received a major interest after exchange, whole field, and contact information with a football coach, with hopes that he could be landing a slot for him. One student that identified his college path, attended a junior college with the intention to transfer to a four-year HBCU after that. One student was able to perform a monologue at Norfolk State University with the charity department. And we had several students work on applications for admissions to colleges of their choice. We also had students that did not even think that they had an adequate GPA to attend these colleges. And what I liked about the trip is we went to so many different types of schools, some big, some small. They showed them how they could be successful and how they would help them to reach their We had twenty-two students leave the HBCU college tour with a positive perspective of higher education. And we also had some staff members leave the HBCU college tour with confidence that students would continue their process of transformation and be the best starters that they could be. And truly it was an inspirational trip. And what I liked most about it was that they showed that they graduate anywhere from forty-two to fifty-two percent every year where mainstream colleges only graduate one to three percent of our school.
Any questions? Any questions from the board? I'd like to hear from the students. If you would be willing to talk a little bit about what was a highlight for you or which college you enjoyed the most, I'd love to hear from all of you, if you're willing.
Wazzer.
Yeah, it was a nice experience. Definitely being able to be around a lot of people that look like you, because of course, White Bear Lake is a PWI institution and we don't do that a lot. So that representation was definitely needed for us to see how people like us are able to facilitate themselves through all their educational pursuits and that is to a four-year institute. And they did, they were really real with us and that was appreciated because we were able to understand them, they are very real with us, it was not sugarcoated. It was just as what it was represented as and we enjoyed ourselves.
Thank you.
Well, I enjoyed it very much because it showed how other people lived and different opportunities anyone could have. Like, most of these HBCUs I didn't know much about, but going on this trip, now I have a higher chance of, oh, I can get this college, I can get there. I have higher options for me.
I would say that the trip was very, very much of an eye-opener. I really was gonna, I was probably gonna go to, what, St. Cloud, that's where I was thinking about going. I was probably gonna go to St. Cloud, but after I went on that trip, I really liked Virginia State and that's where I think I'll go.
One thing that really stuck out for me was just that me being here and growing up around mostly white people my whole life, it's just that I've always seen different kinds of white people, but I've always seen like one stereotypical kind of white person, it felt like, where it's like we have to be this way and this way only. And going to all these different campuses and all these different parts of towns and different cities and stuff, it really opened my eyes to realize that black isn't this, it can be multiple things. So like we saw, going to all these different schools, we saw black baseball teams and black, black swim teams, like bowling teams, you know? And it's like those, some of those activities, you'll never be like, white people do that type stuff. So it was really cool to see that there's different kinds of black people in life, just because of my race, I'm not stuck to one type of person or one type of, like stereotype of a thing. So that was really cool to see. And another thing that really stuck out to me is I'm a social person, so being around different people and getting to experience different personalities, like seeing different people and like seeing people like me thrive, it really helped me open my eyes to see a better future for myself and my friends.
I would definitely just say clear my lens and perspective of everything, like I opened, like anybody else said, just seeing your own people thrive in like their own environment as opposed to like coming to White Bear and seeing people of color, just like black is not doing too well. It's really cool. It was really good vibes. I don't know.
I think it was an eye-opener for me and it was an opportunity to see stuff outside of White Bear Lake and outside of Minnesota and a lot of different schools and opportunities out there. And I think my favorite school was BSU.
Why is that?
I don't know, I just liked it the most. It had the best environment and I liked their facilities really well.
I like the thought of that. I think majority of us right here like BSU. It's just because, a reason why I liked it the most was just when you got off the bus, going, going there, going somewhere and having it feel like home was super, like just real, you know? So hopping off the bus and getting to BSU, started the tour and then getting to sort of the downtown of the campus and all the students were there and all these people were having fun, playing basketball, roller skating, and hanging outside the campus. It just really, really felt like a whole type of environment where like on the weekend where I'd go to barbecue with my family, that's what it felt like. So having a family outside of your actual family made it more about me.
What would you tell students who are at North Campus right now?
Yeah, when you take a chance to go on this trip.
Yeah.
About the trip or just in general about it?
And what you learned? I mean, several of you have talked about this being an eye-opening experience and, you know, you know, changing your lens a little bit. So what would you tell students who are ninth and tenth graders right now?
I was, I was asked a question by the people I stayed with and they were, they asked me if, if I was younger, do I think I would be ready to go on this trip and stuff? Or you, or was it a good opportunity to go at the age of mine right now? And I think that's all in perspective. So if I, if I were to tell someone who was younger than me, I'd just be like, know what your maturity level is and know that when you're going on something as serious as this to other people, respect that feeling and respect that, like, decision to be like, hey, this is the time to be serious, so be serious. Or this is the time, like, we can all mess around, so mess around, you know? I'll just make sure that they knew if, if they were mentally ready, I would like to hope that everybody who's younger knows that they're ready to do it. And we had some kids who were younger than us, than the seniors, go on the trip and some of them, I'm not gonna lie, I was like, I'm kinda worried, like, I don't want them to mess this up for the rest of us. But then they got on the trip and seeing them step up and take this, take this as serious as the rest of us were taking it was super, like, it was super cool to see, you know? And if I were to tell someone who was younger, just make sure you have that maturity level to go and really go into the trip looking for, looking towards something, you know? Don't be like, oh, I'm just doing this to get out of school. Like, do it because you're like, I'm really, I'm interested into finding a new world.
To answer that, as an admin, you know, I've been in North for lots, there was a few of the students and there was some concern with a few of them going on the trip because of attendance or their grades might be lagging a bit, you know? And it was like, hey, let's try to use this as an incentive for, for this first trip. Show, you know, put the care in front of the kids, let them see what it's about. Leading up to that trip, there was a tremendous turnaround in grades and attendance for those students that were going to go. And since they've gone, there's been a huge turnaround in class, like immediate. It is night and day with just those covered, not all of them had bad grades and such, but the ones that did, it's been an immediate turnaround and communication and maturity just to, for them to be able to actually see there are other options. You know, our, our kids around this area, they see northwestern, that goes to, you know, all, all the schools in this area are really good institutions. They, they just didn't know that there is something different out there where there's a lot of people that went right now, you know? I'm, I'm grateful that the, the community really put their arms around this trip and made it happen for you. It was excellent. It really was.
Can I say something else, everybody? Another thing that stuck out was, last year was, and BSU, the group in total was more male than female ratio. So this year, coming in with like the junior, the junior women and the junior men, it's just, there was a big divide, I feel like, at the beginning of the year. And we were sort of guys, girls, or like, oh, this person kind of annoys me, I can't be around this person type of stuff, you know? And then going on the trip, it was like, I mean, we're stuck with the same group of people all the time, so it's either I'm not gonna like you for this week or we're gonna find a way to get along, you know? And I think going on the trip with, with some of the girls and some of the guys that I never thought I would really get along with, it really brought us all super close together. And we're all, I would say we're more of a family, no type of vibe, like, especially Wazzer right here. She's, she, she acts as if we're her older brothers, the guys here. And we mess with her and we all, like, you know, make sure she's on her stuff just to, because that's just what you do as, as a family member. But before, I don't think we would all be able to mess with Wazzer the same way that you do now, you know? So I don't know, I appreciated that and having that opportunity to get along with people I never thought I could get along with before.
And also, I'm sorry, go ahead, Wazzer.
Okay, um, yeah, so, yeah, with Jay Sean's, it was true, like, at the very beginning, BSU was not really connected. It was very much a boys and girls divide. A lot of, a lot of beef is the term he used today. And I think over time with many conversations, we're able to understand each other, but I feel like, no matter how many conversations we had, this exposure of just being in a way isolated but not isolated with each other on the trip and being able to have to be around the same people all the time, allowing our characters to evolve and our relationships to evolve into more of like a brother and sisterhood. So it's not as stagnant as it was before, before we left.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
And just so that you remember as part of the A&amp;I plan that for the next three years, this trip is written into that each year with some fundraising that they will do starting soon in order to help support that for the next three years. And we're also looking at possibly partnering with Rosefield because they also do an HCU trip.
Well, I hope that when you all graduate from an HBCU, you come back and talk to kids at the Unified High School about your experiences. Any other questions from board? Ms. Thompson?
Not a question, just comments on how I'm just so thankful that we have staff in the district that helped make this happen for you all, so you could have that opportunity to see what is out there for you. Because in any community we live in, we're only in that small little cosmos of that one little community. So getting outside to see what else is out there is really important for us all to be able to grow and, and to have those dreams. And then when you mentioned respect for the adults who were with you on the trip and the places you went to, also respect for yourselves. Because as students who are gonna go off, you know, out into the world, you know, you are important as anybody else. So making sure that you're also showing that respect to yourself, that you deserve whatever your sights can be set on is really great. And as somebody about to graduate college, who barely graduated high school myself, the friendships I have made with the families, I have made families with the students in classrooms that I have sat with, and I hope that you all have that opportunity to do that yourselves and, and like Cheryl Allison said, hopefully someday we get to read about you in the paper, in the White Bear Press, former students, you know, all the great things you're gonna do because I believe you are gonna do. So, thank you for coming and sharing with us.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Daniels.
I just wanted to say thank you for being articulate about what it means to you to have gone on the trip and how it solidified your relationships with each other. I really appreciate that. And I'm just curious about how many actual miles that you went on a bus, you went the whole, went on a bus.
We had, we had, we put in some serious hours.
Yeah. It's a long way. They're bad.
Well, because we went from, we started here and we went to Kenosha, then went from Kenosha to Chicago, and Chicago to Cincinnati, and then from Cincinnati we drove all night to DC, and then DC just out every day.
This is exactly what I needed, is that, that mental picture, that map. Because I'm trying to, I'm looking at all of these colleges and I know where most of them are, but I, I mean, that's, you're doing a big loop.
Yeah, then we went, after, after we got to Atlanta, it was, the ride back was through Tennessee, so that route to Chicago, going up through Tennessee.
Six days, seven days?
Yeah, seven, it was seven.
Was there laundry in between the bus? Did the bus seem all the same? Yeah, they were pretty good about that. They didn't wanna hear my mouth.
They drove to Kenosha and, if I'm wrong, you picked up, you have to do it.
No, we stopped at Kenosha to get in the bus.
And then you made it to DC and were on the mall?
No, in DC we went to the African American Museum.
What did you think of that?
That was, I feel like, that was, that was definitely like a really big highlight of the trip, like, because you get to see every single pers- like perspective of black culture, like, just in a nutshell, you see African, Caribbean, South American, North American, just all the guys were, like, just.
Well, for me, it was just my mom always put African American history on me, you know? She made sure I knew everything, or at least as much as I probably could. But when I was younger, I was sort of like, oh, you know, history, history. And going there, it really made me remember all the things that she said, and that was emotional for me because she's not with me anymore. So it made me remember all the things that she said. And just seeing new things as well, because we also got to see the Emmett Till exhibit and that was, I don't know, that was cool seeing how, how strong his mom was to let everybody see, see what happened. So, yeah.
And that museum is powerful for, it's not, it's not just about pain, it's about resistance and resilience.
Yeah.
You could, you could feel the history while you were in.
That can be a master.
I just wanna say thank you again and I respect every one of you for the quantum leap you took and it's a big scary step to take to go into this. I mean, it's really an adult thing to do and you came out of it really sounding like you've taken a big step in expanding your brain and sharing it with other people. I'm really impressed, so thank you for sharing and thank you for doing that. That took courage to do that trip. So step out of your comfort. White Bear's not so comfortable, but it's, it's definitely something that I can see. It's been impressive and you guys are impressive. Thank you to the adults too. Love the photos. All the folks are so great.
Anyone else have questions? I love it when students come to board meetings. You just, you just remind us what this is all for, so.
It's always hard to follow students when they present.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Mons is not gonna excel in his presentation.
He purposely put him.
Thank you. I'll be so excited to hear about the paths that you all choose to take.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And with that, we will move to discussion item B three. Mr. Mons.
See how we can bring a little razzle-dazzle to the technical end of the subject. Yep. Uh huh. Oh, sure. Thanks. So first off, I think that Cindy's only had a chance to get in front of you guys once before, so Cindy Gustafson, our relatively new, finishing up a year here.
Mr. Mons is not gonna excel in his presentation.
He purposely put him.
Thank you. I'll be so excited to hear about the path that you all choose to take.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And with that, we will move to discussion item B three. Mr. Mons?
See how we can bring a little razzle dazzle to the technical end of the substitute. Oh, sure. Thanks. So first off, I think that Cindy has only had a chance to get in front of you guys once before. So Cindy Gustafson, our relatively new finishing up a year here, Assistant Director of Human Resources. And we wanna talk about teachers on call, which is something that we've discussed kind of on the periphery quite a few times as we've given updates on kind of where are we with our, with our substitutes? What, where we've been with rates, et cetera. And where we've been at this point is we've really tried quite a few different things to try to be competitive and see significant gains in our, in our sub programming. And what I can tell you, the short story is it hasn't worked terrifically well. So we are now extremely competitive with our pay rates for our subs. So, and as we've seen improvements in our pay rates for subs, we really haven't seen an improvement in our fill rates to go along with that. In addition, we've tried a lot of different creative ways of looking at, you know, incentives and different programs. One thing that we're really proud of that has worked really well is we did start a partnership and we're collaborating with our teachers union to offer an additional incentive to retired teachers and that's been great. But that's something that helps a little, but doesn't necessarily solve kind of the core issue that we have. So as we've looked at different things, we've also looked at onboarding for how can we expose folks and get them over kind of that initial hurdle of this is scary unless you've already worked in, in the building to step in and subs. We've tried to tackle some of those things and where we're still sitting at this point is we have about a 64% fill rate. And what happens when we're not filling those, there's a number of negative consequences there. First and foremost, the, the biggest negative consequence is teachers don't get their prep. Because often what happens here is we're asking our teachers to take one for the team and give up their prep time in order to, to sub for us. And yes, we offer some compensation for that. But there's no compensation that's going to make up for that missed time. And, you know, our, the nature of teaching is extraordinarily, you know, structured. You are on the whole day and so then to be asking people to step in during their prep period is just really hard. And we, we understand that. So we want to try to be less reliant on that. You know, less important than the impact frankly is, that's also really expensive when we need to rely on teachers subbing during their preps for each of those prep periods. So that's our most expensive format for subbing as we look at that as well. Question, March?
Just, I was applying that out, trying to bring the times that I'd covered. But you must pay people a whole lot more than that.
We do.
Six and thinking.
As, as we've become more and more reliant on that, you know, we have actually improved that quite a bit. We offer $50 to teachers who are taking that, which is again really competitive. We try to say thank you to what we know is still something that teachers would rather not need to step into and do there. So as we've looked at all of that, we've always talked about, okay, we know the teachers on call is out there. I wanna state too that from my personal experience, I brought them into Prior Lake Savage while I was there about halfway through the 11 years that I was in that district. So I do have some experience with that. One thing I'll say is it's not a panacea. It doesn't fix everything. However, there are some really big advantages to it. And Cindy is just coming to us from Stillwater as well, where they went with teachers on call and saw some significant improvement in making that happen. So we have started exploring this. Teachers on call essentially makes their money by charging a percentage on top of what the district is paying. So they charge a percentage on top and then what we have to do is back out some of the costs that they take on. So FICA and TRA and some of those things. So what it ends up being is about eight, 8.8 or about nine percent per fill that you end up paying on top of what we're paying. And so, but there's a number of advantages to working with them. One is simply all of our surrounding districts, with the exception of Forest Lake, is with teachers on call. And I think that it would be less impactful if that wasn't the case. But it's really hard not to be able to access that pool of substitutes that we would have access to with them. And often substitutes will be checking for their teacher on call gigs first and then kind of seeing what else is out there. So it's a way to really expand our sub pool there. There's also additional onboarding and training that they can offer that we just don't really have the staffing to offer, which can be impactful for subs. When it comes to just kind of the baseline right now, like I said, we're at about 64%. You know, what we'd be hoping for is to get closer to that 80% number. So Stillwater and Moundsview, for instance, are up at a 90% fill rate. And they're not any more competitive than we are in terms of what they're offering for compensation. So we know that it would take some time to get there, but we definitely need to make strides towards that. And we certainly wanna see us get at least, you know, up to that 75 to 80% as quickly as possible because it would make a huge difference in the organization for how it feels and how employees even feel, whether they're able to take a day off. Because that's another part of this too. It's not just people stepping in and giving up their preps. We also have a lot of teachers that just know, I'm gonna be putting this on my colleagues because we're not going to be able to find this up. And those are real absences that people need to be able to take. So we are, we are recommending that we would take the plunge and bring teachers on call in for the 24, 25, or I'm sorry, for the 23, 24 school year coming up here. So we would do onboarding. March?
Oh, I just have a question.
Anytime, go for it.
Okay. I remember this, now I've been retired seven years, this is I guess year eight I'm born. So I'm looking back to then. We had gone to a service rather than, you know, locally handling subs. That might be before you were in the district. I can't remember.
Yeah, it would have been.
Yeah. And, and the biggest problem I remember was if people knew someone, you couldn't just talk to them and say, are you available this week? Or especially if you wanted somebody that could teach Chinese or German or chemistry. You don't just want it to be a fill. You hope that it's somebody that knows yours. Now, you're gonna have a bigger pool, but will teachers have any input? Like my top five choices or my top two? Cause I remember that was a hard thing to lose.
They'll really have the same amount of input that they do right now. So we'd be using the same platform. Right now, we use ASOP for, for that. We'd still be using that same platform. So teachers would still be able to have their favorites in there. They'd still be able to have those conversations about availability with the subs that they know well. It really doesn't change that dynamic.
So they have the right to do that?
Yes.
And the difference is just that teachers on call, it's their cut because it's one of their pool?
Correct. Yep. A couple more points. We would be retaining our long-term sub hiring. A lot of districts don't. But I feel pretty strongly that we wanna really make sure that we're driving those processes when we're hiring our long-term substitutes. And when it comes to non-teacher groups, I think it's extremely likely that we would be using teachers on call for our paraprofessional subbing needs as well. However, we can evaluate program by program, whether or not it makes sense to continue to do that in-house or move a group to teachers on call. So for instance, the more complicated the licensing system gets, the less you typically want to partner with teachers on call on that. So for instance, with health services subs, you know, can be an example of, that may not work very well because trying to make sure that you've got the right licensure for cares that students need and those kinds of actions. So we really analyze that program by program before deciding whether or not it made sense. So we'd be able to do that as it made sense and on a timeline that made sense for people to. So nutrition services, for instance, can also be one where it can be harder to run through a system like that. So we, we would just be analyzing all of those individually. You know, for our substitutes, this would mean that they would be, that they'd need to be on-boarded with teachers on call. We'd be able to do that on our campuses. We'd, we'd take every opportunity that we could to make that as easy as possible for people. But that's really about it in terms of what they would feel. All of the incentives, compensation, et cetera, that we offer would still be offered through teachers on call. And we retain control of that. So if we feel like there's something we need to try with an incentive structure, for instance, we'll be able to do that. We currently have a premium that's paid above and beyond additional benefits to retired teachers, for instance. We're able to continue that, that pay structure. So we have complete autonomy and control over that. One thing that I do wanna be pretty clear about is I do think once we make, if we make this commitment, that we are going to be committed. It, I don't want to undersell how difficult I think that it would be to pull out from teachers on call because we have, you know, essentially off-boarded all of our substitute employees and they have on-boarded with this third party company. It's not that it would be impossible to do, but I also just want everyone to know it's something we'd really be jumping into, you know, with both feet. Archie?
This is a lawyer leave type question. So you're the right person. They always talk about people have to sign, what is it, not to work with anyone else then? So if we were to decide this is what we're gonna do and we've committed to do it for a year and it may not be the best fit, it might be perfect, it might be nothing. But if it's not the best fit, do the people that have on-boarded with teachers on call have something where they can't off-board? You know, like you, what is that called?
Like a non-compete essentially?
Conflict or non, non-competitive?
No, that's, that's not a problem with the break in between school years. They do try to retain some of their sub pool. So they will say, you know, for other openings that come up in the school district, for instance, they do charge a fee if you hire somebody for another position out of their sub pool. But that's something that we also work with them on.
But sometimes our long-term subs become, you know, part of the whole team.
Yep. And that's part of why I wanna retain those long-term subs. And with some of those things, I've never found it to be a problem.
You better read the fine.
Well, there's the fine print and then there's also the piece of, they also want us. And one of the things, and I expect not to have too great a friction on that front. And we're very clear about that upfront, that we wanna make sure that we don't experience friction on that front. We wanna be able to hire the people that we need to be successful. Yep.
Other questions? Dr. Arkin?
I just wanna clarify, when we hire them, are they employees of the teachers on call? They'll take care of all the tax information. So we really push that to them and that saves us there?
Correct. Yep. That's why they actually charge 25% on top. But we don't have a number of the costs associated with hiring ourselves.
Other questions? Ms. Daniels?
Yeah. When, when somebody wants to sign up for a position, I mean, do they, as one of March's concerns, I mean, do they get a description, I mean, a good description of maybe that position instead of saying just one specialty? Position open at the school, would it actually say in the area and, you know, the, you know, just.
That would be as detailed as we'd want that to be.
Oh, so we could decide?
Yep.
And be exactly the same as it is now. It's the same system. So they'll take what we have in there and it will just transfer over.
And those people that we know that are current, frequent subs and specific programs can stay with it. And then I just, my other comment would be that I just kinda think, what is the cost if we don't do it? I know there's a cost to what we do, but if we don't, then we have elementary kids sitting in front of seven or eight different people every day when their teacher isn't there because they get 45 minute increments of somebody filling in and how disruptive that is for them. And also for middle school and high schoolers, that's a little bit more cut and dried for them because they're actually in separate classes, going to separate classes. But I think about our younger students and how that must be so difficult for them to have people rotating in and trying to learn. So I think that's a big cost that isn't related to dollars, but it's for our kids. So I, I really like the idea of improving our fill rate. I think that's great. And I know we've talked about this before, but the surrounding districts, I think we do lose subs to those other districts because if they're already signed up, they're gonna ding on their phone and they're gonna say, yeah, I'll figure it out.
And teachers on call has dedicated recruiters. They have billboards. They're going to so many more events than we could ever do as one small entity. So that's really where they're drawing the college students and a lot of people right in. And then they could sub in all sorts of places, which is very advantageous for them.
I just wanna thank you and your leadership, Matt, because we've tried, we've really tried everything up to this point.
Yeah.
And we've gotten really creative and it's still not, still not working. So this seems like a very logical next step. So I feel very, I feel very confident that we're at the right, right spot to make this shift.
Uh, Dr. McMaster?
Just one other question we always talk about trying to have, and I think of the kids that just talk to us. With the pool, do they even look at diversity?
To the same extent that we're able to, yes. Yep.
Just wondering.
Yeah. Yep. However, with that market, I must say, we're, we're taking everybody that we possibly can. So there's no, there's no screening there from, you know, in that regard.
Um, I just have one question. I think this actually came up at one of my first board meetings when I first started on the board several years ago and, but I don't remember the reason why there was pushback. We're obviously in a different situation than we were in 2018. Do you, do you have a sense of why we haven't gotten to this point yet? Why we haven't pulled in teachers on call in the last year or so and when substitutes have been so hard to find?
No, not necessarily. You know, I mean, I can't necessarily speak to that process before. A couple of things, you know, I've certainly brought our teacher leaders and our teacher union, kept them up to speed on what we've been thinking about here and just the background of, you know, we've been really open with, these are the things we're trying. This is what we're doing. So I think, you know, as Wayne talked about, I think people understand and we've really looked at the things that we can look at at this point. You know, and I still, I've still felt like there's a couple of other things that we can try before we, we took this step. But now we really are at the place where I think this is the step that we need to take. So otherwise, I am, I'm not real sure. I think one of the differences is as a private employer, they're not able to offer TRA in the way that we are. However, we have very few individuals for whom that would be impactful. And like our retired teachers, for instance, that would not impact that group.
Just for the record, TRA is teachers retired.
I'm sorry, yes. Yep.
Yeah. And that all makes sense to me. And I think especially, you know, what Ms. Daniels was saying about kids seeing seven or eight different people. But I think also what you said, Mr. Monz, about teachers losing their prep time. Because you're right, there's no amount of money that makes up for the fact that you have these 47 minutes or whatever it is that you can get all kinds of stuff done. Losing that is really problematic. So, yeah, I mean, that makes sense to me. So. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I just wonder what was, cause I remember when we went from the homegrown version to, and I can't remember what it's called. What was in place like a decade ago, they went to a service.
Are you talking about, talking about the software?
Not the software, but the people that ran the software. We had one. And I remember a teacher saying, it's not flexible. It wasn't like it was in district at all.
It was a software.
I was gonna say, it was actually a difference. I was in Roseville at the time that we made the same change that White Bear did. I remember going to trainings with folks and it was a system for sub calling that had been used. And then they switched over to ASOP because that's what everybody else was using. It was much of the same conversation around the idea that I don't wanna be in this subsystem and then have to do a separate application to be part of.
It's smaller than the sub pool.
Correct.
Not the process and the impact on the teachers. So it's similar, but better because it's one pool. Is that how you describe it?
So right now, this current software has allowed people to sub in multiple districts in a way that you couldn't before, which was. in a way that you couldn't before, which was really, really great for, for all of the different subs.
Yeah, I remember they did go to other places.
Yep. Yep. So it really expanded everything in a nice way for people. And I think Teachers On Call might be that next step for subs.
Well, obviously something needs to be done because this is not working.
Yep.
And this will come to us at the next board meeting. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Daniels?
I'm going to make the comment that I know, and I'm not sure if we're doing this anymore because I've been in the district for a while. But when we had some really high needs classes and we couldn't fill them, I mean, you have to have adults there in the class. We'd pull like supervisors from special ed and people that, you know, probably had a seven meetings that day and had other duties that were really important. But we had, you know, it was kids first always. And we'd pull people from other positions in the district. That also has, has a lot of drawbacks because of your, it's a domino effect on, on the work, other work that needs to be done. So I just think increasing that, again, increasing the fill rate is so important. That's the expense of those days that we don't have subs. That's a lot of days and a lot of kids.
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And with that, that is the end for discussion items. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Charles and I.
I have, and first by Dr. Arcand and second by Ms. Daniels, all in favor of adjournment. Please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And we are adjourned.